Goshen, New York. Goshen, New York. Goshen, New York, not in foe. If there is a meeting but you cannot go. Goshen, New York, not in foe. London, Paris, Tokyo, Hong Kong, no matter where in the world you can turn on. Goshen, New York. Goshen, New York. Goshen, New York, not in foe.
This was for Linda Rooney and Jane Hennig. Goshen residents that had a wonderful impact on everyone around them and will be greatly missed. Thank you. Doesn't matter.
I think we're all right with that.
All right, um, I will ask for a motion to accept the agenda presented.
So moved.
Second. Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Regarding the DEC and floodplain. All right, just kind of want to give a quick background on this.
It's just a modification to the floodplain.
Pretty standard.
Yes, and what happens is the work that the DEC did was very general in the sense of specific properties, and if a property has an issue, they will do their own detailed flood study, which is what happened here, and that's submitted to the DEC and FEMA, and the maps have changed, and that's what it's about.
Thank you. All right, can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the public hearing on FEMA change is open. Any members of the public want to comment on that?
All right, I have a question. Is this a change to a general mapping of the floodplain for the village, or is this a specific property?
Specific property, right. Yeah, specific property.
Could you identify that property?
I think it's the Quick Check property that they called.
I believe so, I believe that was part of their approval they needed.
Okay, so this is removing it from the general floodplain mapping?
No, it's making a revision to the floodplain, not removing it, revising the floodplain.
Will the Quick Check property then be within the floodplain after its change?
I imagine portions of it will still be in the floodplain, yes.
Are there any other properties impacted?
That's my knowledge, huh.
Any other public comments on this thing? Yes, Mr. Andrews. Perhaps you could explain why they had to go through this.
Sure. As I said, the floodplain study that was done initially is a very broad study, and it doesn't take into account the specifics of individual properties. So if a property has more detailed, particularly topographic maps, you can submit those maps, and they will get incorporated into the study, and then changes will be made based on a specific topography. And I think that's what's happened here. So they'll amend and adjust the maps to match the accurate topographic maps.
Is it my understanding then that that property, or portions of that property, will be removed from the floodplain as map?
Yes.
What happens if the village does not pass this?
I don't know if we have any authority not to pass it. We don't, we don't have any regulatory, at my knowledge, regulatory authority in regards to establishing the floodplain, that's done by others. So as part of the village's floodplain regulations, I think we go along with whatever the detailed studies have done, and the regulatory authorities agree to. Let me speak to the issue generally. FEMA establishes the flood maps. Municipalities have to adopt those flood maps, otherwise the people, it's kind of a double edged sword. If we don't adopt the flood maps, the people in those floodplains are not eligible for flood insurance. Although, if you're in one of those floodplains and you need to go for financing, you're required to get flood insurance. And I know, because we pay it and our building, and it is not inexpensive. What you have here, there's also different zones. You look at the map, there's Zone A, Zone X, Zone AE, and oftentimes you go to FEMA, and you can demonstrate where the elevation of your improvements are. You can either eliminate the need to have to pay flood insurance, or reduce the amount of premium you have to pay.
So were the village not to adopt this mapping, Quick Check would not be able to get floodplain insurance?
Well, I think they get floodplain insurance, I think, will cost them more money.
It's going to cost them more money anyway.
It seems to be the way of the world, but yeah.
Any other public comments?
I should just add that, you know, Quick Check came to the Village Board early on in this process, and they made it clear to us that there were going to have to be major modifications and what have you, I mean, I couldn't speak to that. But they were going to have to do a lot of additional consultation with the DEC to cover the locations that the property in the floodplain. And I assume that was all part of the approval process.
Is this a change of the FEMA mapping or the DEC mapping? Or an acceptance of?
It's FEMA.
But am I incorrect that the communication was from the DEC?
It's signed from, on the bottom it has both DCE and FEMA, so they worked in conjunction. All right, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. The next public hearing we have is on Greenwich Avenue rezoning and the creation of the CS-1 zone. We had a very similar public hearing about a month ago, but we made some very slight modifications based on our planner's recommendations to that. Stu, I know at the beginning of the last time, you brought up some thoughts that your department had on that, but you just kind of wanted to refresh everyone's memory in the public on those slight things that you had brought up last time.
At the last public hearing, the CS-1, as was proposed, actually just incorporated the place of worship, as well as daycare centers as a primary permitted use, and permits one, two, and three family houses specifically. They're not permitted now, even though some exist. That's the way the code is proposed now, the new CS-1 zone. There have been discussions with the Village Board members, the Village Board over the last period of time, to add more uses to that zone, but you have not resolved that. So this current draft, that's right, this current draft only includes those things which I just mentioned, and really leaves for subsequent discussion a series of potential other uses, including residential use, multiple residential uses, as well as several uses which we suggested in a memo that we sent to the board several weeks ago, so.
All right, thank you. Yeah, just doing, follow up on that. I've been working with Stu's office, and I'm putting together some potential other uses to add into Greenwich Avenue. I know that the board was pretty much in a, so I'm going to open up some more uses. But at this time, really to get this stuff done, I thought I'd sit on the board to approve it the way as is, and then a month or so, come back and add those other changes into it, and hopefully get some more feedback from the public and things like that. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to open up the public hearing.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, any comments from the public on this?
Question?
Yes.
Since the previous public hearing was not a fully constituted valid public hearing, does the record from that previous meeting go out the window?
Well, this is a new public hearing, because there were slight alterations made based on recommendations from last time.
I understand that this is a separate public hearing, but will the record from the last meeting be included with, somebody's looking for the public hearing on this? Are we basically looking at a new?
We held a, you know, we had a meeting, people spoke, and the audience, we're not going to get rid of the records, if that's what you're asking.
The only thing I'd like to add, because I went over the video of this, and did not express myself as clearly as possible, and I don't want to go on at any length whatsoever, I just want to be clear, that I could have expressed it better. The language of the religious use law talks about placing on religious use, talks about a substantial burden on religious exercise. The point that I was trying to make is that by rezoning to allow religious use on those properties, a substantial burden is being placed on the economic lifeblood of the village, and as such, I believe gives the village, gives the municipality, cause to deny religious use in that area. That was the reason that I referred to the Highland Falls, I believe it was the Highland Falls answer to the audit, where they make the point about their economic lifeblood. And I think the case can really be made here, particularly in this day and age, where the village is doing as poorly as it is economically. I think, I believe that there's every reason to maximize the economy of the community, and that granting religious use within the only commercial core you have is an undue burden on the community, and cause for restricting religious use in that only commercial corridor.
Thank you very much. That's all of them there.
I agree with you. Unfortunately, the Supreme Court doesn't agree with either of us, that's the problem.
That's why I referred to precedent last time, I'm sure that there is precedent.
Yeah, the Supreme Court doesn't agree with you or I, but, so we have to work with the Constitution and what the nine justices of the Supreme Court have interpreted it to be.
We have to adhere to the law, you know, I believe in that absolutely. I still, you know, you're probably right, I just feel that we're in dire straits, and we need to do everything we can to survive at this point. At the same time, we honor the need to have free exercise. Thank you.
Well, just briefly, because I know this issue came up the last hearing, and one of trustees raised it as well. One of the, we've heard in earlier discussions about the whole question of the religious land use, the court cases and so on. And the way the code is now, and is proposed, and you may modify it soon, but the way the code is now is that religious uses are, would be permitted everywhere in the village, except in the immediate core, the very dense core, which is recognized as the economic center. And there was concern about if there were religious land uses there, that would preclude or make it difficult for restaurants and drinking establishments, which are part of the village's economic base. Now, one of the reasons that it was suggested that we could change the C1 corridor, well, would be the C1, CS1 corridor on Greenwich Avenue, is that, the reason, as I expressed, was that everything is much tighter in the immediate downtown area. There are larger parcels on Greenwich Avenue that would allow, if the case were to arise, a religious use to occur, and maybe still not preclude, say, a restaurant or drinking establishment, because the properties are larger and the religious land use could be separated more easily. Now, that, there's no assurance of that, but that's part of the reason why, I think with legal advice, we had proposed that the religious land uses be permitted in as much of the village as possible without hurting the economic base, and that's why it's proposed this way.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? All right, I'll ask for a motion to close the Greenwich Avenue rezoning, creation of CS-1 zone public hearing.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. And now, public hearing on places of worship law, which is certainly tied to the Greenwich Avenue rezoning, because we are doing this to allow religious land use in one, but prevent it in the central corridor there. Can I have a motion to open this public hearing?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, any comments from the public on this? All right, I will ask for a motion to close that public hearing.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And just for the public, swear, I believe the board has a pretty good degree of consensus on this, but because Trustee Smith can't be here tonight, I'm not going to have us vote on those, because he did have a different opinion on those items, and I wanted him to be able to be here and express that before a vote was taken. All right, we have the minutes from the Village Board meeting of August 13th, 2012. Any urgent admissions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Yeah, one of us has not heard you.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
I have to abstain, which means the mayor has to.
I will go. All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Same, I would not hear.
All right. Under communications, we have a letter from AAA. Dear Mayor Radi, congratulations. Your community has won a bronze award in the 2012 Community Traffic Safety Awards Program. You are cordially invited to join us at AAA New York's 48th Annual Community Traffic Safety Awards luncheon. This year's luncheon will be held on Wednesday, October 3rd, at the Carlton in Eisenhower Park, East Mountain, New York. The Honorable Barbara Fiala, Commissioner of the New York State Department of Motor Vehicles, will be the guest speaker. In an effort to keep the program shorter than previous years, we will take award presentations and photographs during a one-hour pre-luncheon reception beginning at 11:30 a.m. This will be the only opportunity for you to photograph with your award. Please make every effort to arrive on time. We have also extended invitation to your chief law enforcement official. However, due to space limitations, attendance will be limited to no more than two representatives from each community. Kindly prepare for your attendance, if you're attending. We have our members, we look forward to working, look forward to opportunity to recognize your community for your commitment to traffic safety. We hope you'll be able to attend. Well, this is a very nice award to receive. I will not be able to attend the luncheon, I'm not sure if the chief is, but it just goes to show the continued great work that our staff here does, do on a daily basis. Anybody comments on this, Ed, because of what this is?
Nope. Nothing was to say.
We'll do a great job, and it's nice to see recognition for our good work. All right, items of business, we have an abstract of vouchers. Bills that are examined by members of the board were approved in accordance with the abstract 2012, 2013, numbers three and four, check numbers 3772 through 4147, in the amount of $455,757.54. And again, these are all bills that have gone through the process internally here, have been checked, signed off by two trustees or three trustees. Can I have a motion on this?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we have a resolution here for direct deposits, and our employees are very happy about. Being resolved, the Village Ocean will allow automatic electronic deposits and payroll checks to be made to one account and one depository per employee in accordance with the specifications of the village's accounting system. It is further resolved that the Village Ocean will engage J.T. Morgan Chase as the originator for direct deposit. Again, moving the Village Ocean into the 21st century, one resolution at a time. Can I have a motion on this?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, just want to thank our staff here, Megan, Sarah, and everyone who's getting this going, I know it's going to make a lot of people that work for the village very happy. All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes. Daniel Zalinski is hereby authorized to attend the New York Rural Water Association Laboratory Seminar on November 13th, 2012, at Thermadi International, New York. It is understood that the cost of the training is $75, and a total of six contact hours will be awarded towards recertification. So one of our employees continuing to get his certifications that's mandated. Can I have a motion on this?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor, very many discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we have a tax refund to the First Presbyterian Church. I'll read through the resolution. Whereas the First Presbyterian Church has heretofore filed a proceeding in the Supreme Court of Orange County pursuant to Article 7 of the Real Property Tax Law, seeking to contest the assessment imposed on the real properties located at 90 Main Street and Kelsey Lane in the Village Ocean, which properties are designated on the tax map to Section 109, Block 3, Lot 7, and Section 109, Block 5, Lot 22. Whereas the duties of assessing real property in the village for purposes of real property taxation are vested with the assessor's office for the town of Ocean, and whereas the town of Ocean and their assessor have heretofore determined that it is in the best interest of all parties that the proceeding commenced by the First Presbyterian Church be settled and compromised, and whereas the village is in receipt of a stipulation of settlement duly signed and approved by the attorneys representing the town of Ocean, the attorneys representing the petitioner, and the office of the Orange County Attorney, which stipulation of settlement has been approved by Honorable Catherine and Bartlett, Supreme Court Justice. And whereas pursuant to the terms and provisions of said stipulation of settlement, the village is obligated to refund certain tax amounts heretofore paid by First Presbyterian Church. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that pursuant to said stipulation of settlement, the Village Board hereby directs the village treasurer to issue a check in the amount of $5,212.44, and to deliver the same to First Presbyterian Church as provided for in said stipulation of settlement. Can I have a motion on this?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I believe this is the Firehouse and the Obak property.
I believe so.
Correct.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Reading the resolution reminded me of something I wanted to mention earlier, I wanted to thank Councilman Kenny Newbolt for joining us here tonight. Meant to do that earlier, but I forgot, so thank you for joining us, Ken. All right, Schedule Public Hearing on Sign Regulations. This is to schedule a public hearing for some changes to make to the signage laws. The justice, such was the signage committee, which a number of people in the room were a part of. This is, this was an attempt to put together all the ideas that different people had in the committee, and to integrate that with some thoughts that the Village Board members had. The Village Board hereby resolves all the public hearing on September 24th, 2012, at 7:30 p.m., or as soon after may be heard, for the consideration of adoption of a local law to amend Article 7 of Appendix A to the Village Code of Village Ocean Title and Sign Regulations. And again, this was really put in action to make the village more business friendly for our businesses, to allow them to better promote themselves while still maintaining the nice historic charm that we have in the village. And I thank the members that were on that committee, Joel Neal, Lori in this room, we're all involved. Can I have a motion on this?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next we have on here, something that Joel's been long waiting, proposed consent decree from, between New York State and the Village Ocean. This is the culmination of the exchanges back and forth between this village and New York State, the Attorney General's Office, and Department of Conservation, Environmental Conservation. And I want to first clarify by saying this does need to be finalized in court. We had a conceptual agreement with New York State, but it does need to go to the upper level of the Attorney General's Office, and then it will be finalized when it is signed in court by a judge. But all signs point to an agreement there, but in order for the process to continue, the village needs to adopt a vote on this tonight. To talk about some of the details in there, first and foremost, it is to remediate the two violations that were the cause of this. The old village landfill that was excavated and put on 17, that was supposed to have been removed in 2007, and the village was sent a notice violation because it was not moved in 2007. Certainly, we all know that that's been removed, so that isn't really something that's still hanging out there. We're doing the last testing now, I believe the last testing has already been done, we're just waiting to certify the testing results there. So that is behind us for the most part. Our infrastructure in the village, we need to issue quarterly reports and continue to do our infrastructure investigations in the village, and it's going to, well, everything we've been doing, we're going to continue to do, you know. This might be, this is the beginning of an agreement with New York State to continue to improve our infrastructure, to study what we have, and figure out ways to eliminate these, this INI and the overflows. I think we've made great strides in that over the past few years, and I think, you know, we've seen the quantifiable data at the sewer plant, to actually show that there have been gains made, but there is still plenty of work to be done, and that's really the reason for this. Now, there's two components financially of this. There is a fine. Now, we've all heard throughout this process, the fines, you know, first something like this could be in the millions of dollars, literally, you know, those numbers are thrown around, very scary nightmare scenarios. I'm very happy to announce that the fine amount is going to be $25,000. Obviously, we would have liked that to be nothing, and I know that David Art, myself, tried to make that case to the DEC Attorney General representatives a number of times, but the reality is there are precedents for this, and they can't go around precedents for one village, regardless of how convincing we might have been. However, the fine is only $25,000 as opposed to what it could have been, and the reason it's that low is because the village has negotiated what's called an environmental benefit project with the DEC and Attorney General, where they basically say, look, you can keep X amount of the money local, as long as you do something that's beneficial for the environment. The trick is, what's beneficial to the environment can't be fixing the problems that got you in the mess to begin with. So, for example, we can't take money and invest it in the sewer infrastructure, because we already have to do that. But working with them, and like you tell, his office and David's office were really wonderful, and that whole process, they worked extremely hard on this. We have two projects that will have a benefit to the environment in a number of ways, and also benefits the village and village residents. The first of those is stormwater improvements and creation of a rain garden here at Village Hall. That's something that is more the lower cost of the two projects, but it is going to help us in terms of managing our stormwater better in the village, as the park lot is an impervious surface and all that. The other component, which is actually much more exciting for me, is a new recycling program in the village, where we have had single stream recycling in the past, the village, for over a year now, but we are going to actually purchase recycling bins and garbage bins for all the village residents, and we are going to be retrofitting a garbage truck with one of those arms to pick it up. Our number one source of workers' comp cases have been people getting on it off the garbage truck, and this is going to help with that. But the most important reason why we're doing this project is to get more people to recycle, because everyone here knows the value of recycling in terms of helping the environment, but this is also going to be scaffolded with an aggressive educational program, where we're going to let people know the benefits of recycling, whether the pickup is, how to do it, what you can mix in, what you can't mix in, and we really believe with all this combined, we're going to see a dramatic increase in recycling in the village, which ultimately is going to have a very beneficial impact on the environment. Again, just to wrap up, and then I'll ask for a motion and open up the board comments. David and Art did a phenomenal job, and I want to thank you all publicly for all the work you guys put in on this. This really is the best possible scenario as a result we could have gotten based on this. David, from a legal standpoint, is there anything that you would like to mention to the public, some information?
The only thing I do want to go over, some of the technical details in terms of the manner in which this will ultimately be approved, as explained to me by the assistant attorney general who's in charge of this matter, is that he has basically the approval from his immediate supervisor and from the DEC to submit this. The next step is for the Village Board to approve this. He then has to take that to the upper management in the Attorney General's Office. They will not review, approve, or deny anything until they have all those baseline components taken care of, which include the village, as well as the, I won't call them the lower, but the frontline people at the AG's office and the DEC. He doesn't anticipate any issues, but you just have to be aware that upper management still has to approve that. Then what happens is, he has to actually file an ORGAI, request for judicial intervention, to get a judge assigned, it will be an Orange County judge, an Orange County proceeding, and then we'll have to go to court, conference the matter, and present this consent order on the record, and it will be signed by an Orange County Supreme Court Justice. How long will that take? Forty-five to sixty days is a good bet. The only other item, in terms of the compliance schedule, if you see for the so-called water violations, that compliance schedule, you've all been getting copies of this, like you tell, he's been distributing that to the DEC proudly for almost 18 months now, first on a monthly, then on a quarterly basis. DEC just has to make sure that all those dates are correct, we think they are, but they have to make sure that they're finally correct. In terms of the, we deal with one consent order for what we call the solid waste violations, that deals with the landfill, if you will, the stockpile, and the water violations, the stormwater surcharges. Just so the boards are aware, in my conversation with the Attorney General, is that the majority of the fines, so the majority of the fine and the reason for the expenditure relates to the fact that the stockpile was in its location for such a long period of time. Supposed to be cleaned up in October 2007, and ultimately wasn't finally cleaned up until, I believe, November 2011. So the majority of the expenditures are required as a result of the length of time that the stockpile was there.
Thank you. All right, I will ask for a motion on this.
The motion to authorize or to approve the consent order as presented by the Attorney General.
Ask a motion for that.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Absolutely. First of all, David and Art, a lot of hard work went into this. David, you lived it even longer than anyone. So thank you first and foremost, all of you for, you know, and I think a lot of it stems from the mayor opening the door to DEC and cooperating with them, which they hadn't seen from this village in a long time, and letting them know we weren't joking anymore, we're serious about this, and we wanted to work with them as partners, and I think it came through, in essence, a great partnership agreement with them. So thank you.
Yeah, I would just add, there's been a tremendous amount of work on David's part and Art's part, and I think that, trustee Charles, comment? and Art's top part, and I would echo Trustee Char's comments about the mayor, the mayor when he was elected as the trustee in 2009, shouldered the responsibility willingly to the sewer commissioner. And since he's been mayor, he's continued to basically operate in that capacity. And largely through his efforts, as well as the efforts of David and Art, if this has come to fruition, the dirt pile got moved. And the other thing I think that is just notable about this is that, in my previous life, on my first incarnation on the board from 1999 to 2005, before those years, I was the DPW Commissioner, and now I've been the DPW Commissioner for the last three, and never in my history on this board have we ever put the kind of effort into the sewer system that we had, especially in the last year, there's been articles in the paper this past week where this has been explained. But just to emphasize again, we've had the TV program, the lines going on, we've had all this investigation to find the major areas of infiltration of INI, these hookups that go back for long periods of time, this is all, pretty much all these instances, all the initiative all put forward on this by the mayor, including the fact that we have, what, $500,000 of it? Is it 500 this past year's budget?
Yes.
$500,000. We've never had anything approaching that con money. And obviously, we've had problems in the past, but I think with the mayor's leadership, we're addressing them now, and we're moving forward, and we're solving a lot of these problems, we're finding a lot of them. We had the trunk line that was put in, which alleviated this huge bottleneck that was in the system, and I think this is all to reflect credit on the mayor and the job he's done.
Thank you.
I'm the newest member of the board, so, you know, I was thinking about this and why we're in this situation, and it's easy to put it on past groups or whatever, but I think one of the problems with the sewer is that it's always the job of the, it's always gets dumped on the new trustee. I was thinking when I came in, I would be, I would be walking into that, but it kind of is a credit to the mayor, again, to see the project through. I think a lot of times, you know, you walk in, you don't really know how to administrate as a new trustee, which is probably why you walked into the sewer job initially, but you carried it through, could have dumped it off, I give you a lot of credit with that, gotten to see the backend of the work. I know how hard David's worked on it, Art, so, you know, it's just, it's nice to see it come together. I mean, it's been a project that we've been working on for a long time, and it's exciting, so kudos to everybody.
I, just like that, I'd be remiss if I didn't have all the work done by Mike Omen, by our sewer and water people, and our DPW crews have done an awful lot of work, and the TVing of the lines, and the other work that's been done in the sewer system, and kudos to them as well.
Absolutely. All right, so, we have a motion, we have a second, and no further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye to approve this proposed consent order.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Well, open up to trustee comments, trustee Brady.
I'll start with the water report. The crews are assisting a contractor with installation of a six-inch water tap for the sprinkler system at the Mini Sink Firehouse. The crews are done reading the water meters from September billing. Reservoir is at minus 20 inches, again, relatively new to this, but by all accounts, that's really good shape for the time of year we're in, we're about to hit the wet season, so looks like we'll make it through the summer unscathed. I remember when I first started, Mike was telling me it was gonna be a rough summer, so it's like we escaped that. And we are beginning to do work on Filter 4. We completed Filter 3 in the past year, so Michael and the crew are beginning to identify Filter 4 as the next project. Still educating myself on some of the things regarding that, but the report is good for Mike. And we've already touched on the consent order, so I don't need to talk about that anymore, but I'll touch on, you know, some of the stuff in the community, we're all residents here, you know, I lost my cousin a couple of weeks back, and we had the two tragedies, and, you know, sometimes, again, I tried to get this out last time, but you're just, you see why you love living in a village or a community, and tragedy sometimes exposes it, but we come together and uplift each other, and I've seen a show of strength and solidarity in the past couple of weeks that is pretty exciting. So, you know, we're hurting the village economically, but it's nice to see everybody come together for our fellow residents.
Well said. Trustee Stewart?
Yeah, I would just echo, we're all selected, we're all involved, it was just a very difficult period of a couple of weeks, but I do know people involved that have mentioned to me how overwhelmed they are, the love and the outpouring of support you get in a community like this, so, in a horrible, horrible situation, it is good to see the good side of people. As far as the more mundane things, Michael's on a well-deserved vacation, and his wife are down at the beach, having lovely weather, I hope they're enjoying themselves. There's a contractor in the process of testing spores on Bruin Place, and we're prepared for our upcoming drainage project, and the crews installed ADP, eight-inch drain pipe on Nelson Street, that's it.
Thank you. Trustee Charlie?
Nothing from the police department, I'm gonna try to get this out. Twelve days ago, I lost a very, very, very dear friend of mine. I think everyone in this audience in this room knows her husband very well, Ray. It was gonna come tonight, actually, but the events kicked in, so it wasn't tonight for it, but I know I speak for myself, and I speak for him when I say, while it's tragic and horrible that the events of the last twelve days have been, it reaffirmed both of our beliefs as to why my wife and I, he and Linda chose to bring our families to the Village of Goshen. I'm gonna leave it there before I lose it, but thank you on behalf of Ray and his family, to everyone in our village for the extreme outpour of care and concern for him and his family. Thank you.
Thank you. In terms of, I have a few other things, but just to echo everyone's comments, I mean, it's been a very challenging few weeks, and just as we move forward, we just have to keep those that we're impacted the most in our hearts and in our minds to continue to be there for them, and I know this community will, because they're a place where we care about each other very much, and it's a pleasure to be here. Okay, sewer stuff, we have recently sewer jetted Canal Street. I would like to publicly thank, and I'm gonna invite him to a public meeting to be thanked in person, but Jonathan Search, local village resident, Eagle Scout candidate for his Eagle Scout project redoing the back ramp, the handicap ramp outside. When everyone's leaving tonight, you can take notice how rated John, if you're interested, Troop 63 did, and I will be having him come here to get recognized by the board in the future, which is why it's fresh, I wanted to mention that. Friday, I went to the senior center and attended a luncheon there that was sponsored by a local Girl Scout. I do not have her name, but I will find out, but it's just one of those things that brings to the forefront everything the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts do, and it's just a wonderful thing. She catered a luncheon for the seniors, free HR just has a project, not even a Gold Award project, just the Bronze Award, it's one of the lower level ones, but it was just a really nice thing, and there's numerous projects like that that might not get as noticed because they aren't as visible, but we really are unfortunate to have some great Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts troops local. Just update with the 17M site, as we talked about on late tonight, the dirt is gone, the final testing has been completed, just waiting to sign off on that. We had executed a contract with a real estate broker to help us market the site, and we had a forester visit the site with Art to look at potential trees that can be taken down to generate some money for the approval process in terms of logging. We're not gonna be clear cutting the entire site or anything overboard like that, we're not, we don't wanna do anything that's gonna impact the site from the road and make it less aesthetically pleasing, but we are gonna try to generate some revenue by cutting down trees that would be cut down in the future if there was a building there anyway, so that's a good thing. And last, some happy news, I'm very happy to announce that the St. Patrick State Committee has met, and met, and met again, and I can announce tonight, next year, the Village Agosian will remain as host of the St. Patrick State meeting. So, green news, and I want to thank Trustee Char for attending some meetings with me and advocating on behalf of the village. It's one of the happier events that we have here, and it's a good thing for the downtown and a good thing for our community.
Okay, citizens comment.
Can I do one thing?
Absolutely.
I do want to recognize, remember the fire parade, September 8?
That's right.
Trustee Stewart, one of the marshals in Division 1, congratulations.
Well deserved.
Everybody stick around to the end of the parade, because my dad is one of the marshals in Division 4.
Absolutely. That is great, congratulations. All right, public comment. I'm waiting. Sounds like you're a town pride, you do.
I already had the R S on my back, thank you. I have a couple of questions about the consent order. The document that's published online is a proposed draft from the D E C or the A G's office, which has been put before the village to approve?
That's correct.
So, this is basically, in essence, the document that has been negotiated down to this point?
That's correct.
Just to clarify, my understanding is, from having gone over that quickly, is that it calls for $25,000 of cash fines and a mandated $307,000 expense on the environmental benefits program, so that the cost to the village mandated by this settlement will be $332,000? Is that correct?
That's correct, but everything in excess of the $25,000 is staying local for local projects, not going into the state.
Still and all, as taxpayers, we're gonna have to come up with another $332,000.
No, because it's, we all have contingent line items in our budget that are gonna be able to cover this, whether it spans over a few years, we have to look at the finances.
I was gonna go there.
It's not gonna result in an increase of any sewer water rates, and it's not gonna result in increases, period.
At the August 6th work session, the budget was amended, and the resolution published in the minutes indicates that there was an increase in the sewer contingent line, two lines, coming to about $780,000 combined.
Yes.
Without explanation or explication in the minutes.
But I did explain it that night. I explained it that night.
Right. It was certainly before I got here, it was right at the head of the meeting, and there's nothing in the minutes, so any village residents looking to find out what this means have nothing before the head.
Well, if you please specify, because there was an explanation given, don't just leave out if I think there was not.
If I might finish, I was gonna ask you to, now, in a regular session, to explain to people what the amount is, what it means, and where it's coming from.
The Village of Goshen borrowed $30 million to build the plant, one million was not used. The Environmental Facilities Corp. said that the only benefit we can get of that, instead of taking away from the whole and taking a little less off every year that is owed, they could forgive that for two and a half years, the principal, not the interest, but the principal. So, we eliminated that amount in the budget that would have been paid, and that is, but we needed to change it on the other line, so we put it in the contingent fund just to make the budget balance.
So, this is money that will not be going out of village coffers to the E F C?
Correct.
Essentially creating a surplus to the approved budget to the extent of $767,000.
Well, the thing is, yeah, I mean, it's in the budget, but the difference between the sewer fund and the general fund is the general fund is paid by taxes that are not one to anyone. Sewer is done quarterly, so, one of the discussions that I'm having now with the village accountant is what variations will this allow us to put in terms of the sewer assessment or sewer rates? Obviously, it's only forgiveness on the principal for two and a half years, so the dramatically reduced rates or assessment to have them skyrocket again two and a half years from now wouldn't make sense. So, we're trying to figure out in terms of a few other factors what real relief we could provide to people while still being fiscally sound in the fund.
Ultimately, though, we need to repay the entire amount of the bond, yes? This is just a temporary clause in the repayment of the principal?
Correct, it's for full yearly payments and one half.
But ultimately, we will have to pay it, that $767.
This is the only option they gave us.
Oh, no, no, we're not paying $767.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, 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 yeah.
This is the question, it, you know, I don't understand it, I'm sure a lot of people don't understand it, it's a big number, whether it's a positive or a negative, just looking for some clarity about what this means to us in terms of our pocket.
Sure, instead of, because, well, essentially, we don't have to pay that money, that's how we get a refund, if you will, of the money that was advanced but not needed, that portion of the money.
So, this is then a forgiveness of that amount, not a temporary clause?
It's not taking it on the front end and putting it on the back end, if that's what you're asking.
We didn't use it, therefore, we don't have to repay it.
We didn't use it, but, correct.
And it then reduces any charges that might be made in the future against that project or fund, so that if we had additional work for the sewer plant in terms of modification or maintenance, it couldn't be pulled from that bonding because...
Well, no, because it has to have the bonding nevertheless.
That bonding doesn't allow us to use that Freddie sewer clause moving forward, or it has to be specific, new bonding, none of that.
Even if it were involved with the facility?
Oh, sure, you have to submit, you have to basically, you know, pin on your head and give the order, put your heels and make the E F C, correct.
And how is it then that there's no expense to the community for the settlement of the consent order? I mean, it's money that we have to pay, one way or another.
Correct, well, first, I want to say that until it's finalized and sealed, we're not gonna finalize any plans in terms of the payment, but in every year's general fund budget, we have a contingency amount, so that's over $100,000. And there's also a slight surplus in the sewer water pump, so we're gonna talk to our accountant and figure out what the best way to move this thing forward is.
So, in other words, you're saying the entire 332 does not currently exist, but we lay enough aside each year that we can cover?
Well, I mean...
From what we have now plus what we would need?
I don't wanna get ahead of myself and misspeak, because as I said, it's not finalized, and we're still having discussions with our professionals that...
And I'm not looking to trip you up, I'm just looking for some clarity.
Well, there's, like I said, there's different things we can do, there's contingent fund that we could maybe spread it out over three years, that's something that's possible, there's surpluses, we have to decide what's in the best interest of finances, not just now, but 10 years from now, so we're gonna look at that.
And last thing on this, I think it's last thing on this, in discussing projects that would be of benefit to the community, was it broached and rejected, or was it even part of the discussion to address the cleaning out of the Rio so that we would avoid flooding in the future?
We did a lot of hard work.
And also with that, another possibility of dealing with the breaks in the lines at elevation that are allowing the lower elevations to surge.
Let me answer this way, we had a lot of discussions, a lot of projects were discussed, those projects had to be vetted through the D E C, through different arms of the D E C. We had several meetings on various projects, and I think it's not gonna be helpful if we go back and say, well, we presented project A, the D E C didn't like that project. I just don't think that's gonna be helpful to a resolution. What we ultimately have is projects that the D E C will approve, and that we think are beneficial to the Village of Goshen.
Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Stewart?
Mr. Stewart, I want to congratulate the board on your progress you've made in the consent order. It's not easy, and I know I was sitting on a different board, when you can bring an issue like this to conclusion, it's a good thing, because a lot of people, a lot of hard work, it doesn't come easy, so congratulations on that. And I think more importantly, stop the gossip and the rumors that have been circulating around this town and village for a long time, so, congratulations, best of luck in bringing this to a final conclusion. David? Always pleasure. And it's good news to find out St. Patrick's Day parade's gonna be so, she has the best news, no offense, of course.
All right, any other public comments tonight? Yes?
On the sewer area?
So, we're done?
Yeah. Right enough, the way you were televising the lines?
Yes.
Did you find some major situations where there was infiltration?
Yes, the, there was a major breakage, and jumping if I'm wrong, on Scotston Avenue that was replaced probably two or three months ago? And that was taking on significant amounts of groundwater, and that was repaired after being found through TV. That's the biggest one that jumps out, the most...
That's the biggest one that jumps out, the most recent, but, you know, it's something you always do, because not only will it identify breakages or cracks in the lines, but it'll also identify blockages, those happen when roots grow in and stuff like that.
Was that just from wear and tear within the roads, or...
I don't know, Art, do you?
Yeah, it's hard to say, many, we think that it had to do maybe with the installation of a, another utility that's by the village that disrupted it, so we're not quite sure how it happened. But it was the separation of the joint to pipe that was allowing groundwater to enter the system.
On the land, the land on 17M, how many acres are actually usable?
I think it's about 50 acres.
That's usable?
I believe, well, there's, there's quite a bit of it that's encompassed by wetlands, there's some steep slopes, rock outcrops, but we looked at an area of about 50 acres, and of that 50 acres, I think that the core area, probably about 20 acres, that is the most usable. The rest of it is gonna be dependent on type of project that's proposed there, whether or not they wanna go after additional site grading and clearing, et cetera.
How many acres of wetland are there?
I'd be guessing, many, but I think about 60, 70 acres or eleven. Overland, and then some other land around it that will take a little bit more work because of photography and or other site constraints.
Yes. Any other comments? All right, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone, thank you.
Good night, David. Good night, Jeff.
Good night, Grandpa.
Yeah, now it's a different grandpa. Hi, John Boy.
Thank you very much.